Okay, I'll start the May 11th meet, open the May 11th meeting 2022 of the Berlin zoning Board of Appeals. Um, this uh meeting is taking place via Zoom webinar. Your image, telephone number, or voice may be recorded. For participants and panelists. I'll introduce the folks, Leanne, if you just raise your hand. I'm Lynn Ryan, Danny.
And Miss Spallett.
Jim.
Jim Royer.
Pat.
Pat Jackson.
And Jenny. And here comes Susanna. Okay, being that the petitioner for seven o'clock is not here as yet. Um, why don't we do minutes or something, Leanne, okay?
Yes.
If no one objects.
So minutes are for April 13th, 2022.
I would move that that we accept the minutes of the meeting from April 13th, 2022.
As presented, and Danny, you seconded it.
Yes.
I'll do a roll call, Danny.
Yes.
Jim.
Aye.
Pat.
Accept, yes, aye.
Jenny.
Aye.
Susanna.
Aye.
Okay, and I'm an aye, so it's a unanimous vote. Um, what else do we have other than minutes to do that's administrative?
Um, nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Unless somebody else has something.
I apologize for the fact that we had to split these up, and in some, some instances, it created a bit of a problem. We had continuation of the contractor yard. We had Autumn Ridge, and we had West Street, which is scheduled for tonight. And we were also, we also have BMS sign, which by the way, we have to put off until June because they didn't get it posted in time in the paper. And then there's 30, 34 South Street, which is this sign for the school. Um, so that'll go off until June. We have the Bigelow cannabis, which they're supposed to be 7:30 tomorrow night. And then Autumn Ridge was gonna be moved to the 11th, but they didn't make that either, did they?
No, they weren't able to because of, um, we found out that the Western Telegram requires a three-day lead time, which I, we were never aware of.
It used to be that you could go there on a Thursday in the morning and they'd put it in Friday, but no more.
Yep, so they're tomorrow night. He had the time to get it in for tomorrow night, but not for tonight.
So do we just have this one tonight, or do we have this one and the?
We have, we have 72 West Street.
272.
Uh, 272. We have the contractors yard, the continuation of that. We have 34 Autumn Ridge.
No, we only have two, the two, the two continued hearings from last month, and then tomorrow night, we have the two new hearings of 32, 34 Autumn Ridge and 10 Bigelow and Berlin Hudson.
Okay.
And I still don't see the petitioner for the first hearing unless he's logged on with somebody else, in which case you'd need to raise his hand.
We have 16 participants.
I'm thinking, I'm wondering if they're all for the, the next hearing, which doesn't start until 7:30.
Do we want to try to make a courtesy call? Jim, would you like to try to call him?
Do you have a contact number for him?
Um, do you have a petition yet? I think there's one right on the petition.
Um, yep, here we go. Are you ready, Jim?
Yep.
Uh, 978-333-3321.
Okay, let me try giving him a call.
Thank you.
And did you, everybody see that he didn't send out his updated materials for tonight until, like, I think around 3 o'clock this afternoon, so?
He must have known it tonight, yeah.
Yeah, so I forwarded it to everybody. I don't know if everybody got a chance to see it, but I didn't get it till.
Thank you, yes, I did.
Well, I went to the planning board Tuesday, um, a week ago. When's the last time they met?
Yeah, it would have been last Tuesday, I believe.
We go all Tuesday. I like that ringtone. He is starting a search for Margaret's replacement.
Oh, are they? Good. Well, I don't know how they're gonna replace her, but.
Well, then I, you know, everybody has their positives and negatives. Margaret has few of the most negatives. But um, I have, I've never seen a town administrator be as diligent and spend as much time as she does.
Yeah, she's been great.
And she's been good to us. Whenever we needed counsel or anything, she's always been able to find it for us.
All right, petitioner is trying to log in right now. He's apparently confused and thought the meeting was 30 days after the last meeting. So he was under the impression, apparently it was on the 13th.
Oh.
We, we don't meet on Fridays, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Especially Friday nights.
If you guys don't mind, I've gotta relocate because I am totally blinded by the sun setting.
You just need a big piece of cardboard.
Or a lot of duct tape.
You know how thick my windows are?
I don't know, duct tape solves everything, right, Jim?
Well, it takes care of a lot of things.
Must be frightening, just the same, to be the petitioner and get that phone call, huh, Jim?
I know, huh? And not be prepared or expecting to.
I mean, I just don't like being hard-nosed unless we have to, you know what I'm saying?
Well, we did have him sign that agreement to extend the hearing deadline to file a decision, so I wonder if maybe that's what confused him.
Okay.
Because the continuation notice does say May 11th at 7:00 PM, but.
It was moved.
Yeah.
Now, the, oh, we have gotten a letter for this hearing from Conservation, correct?
Yes, the.
And we haven't heard.
Conservation agent sent one on April 22nd.
Okay, I may ask you to read the substance of it. We haven't gotten any information from the Butters, right?
Um, yeah, in the emails that I forwarded late this afternoon, he did have a couple of letters or emails from the Butters. It was after I left the office, so I did see it on email, and I forwarded to everybody, but I don't have a printed copy.
Okay, but they were positive, were they?
I believe so.
I'm sorry?
I believe they were, yes.
Okay.
All right, here, here comes Douglas. I'm gonna promote him up to panelist, Lynn.
Please, Joe.
I read both emails, and they were both in favor.
Okay, could we ask you to maybe read them into the record if we need to?
Yes.
If you have them there.
Give me one second.
All right, Douglas, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, we can hear you, and let me.
Sorry, guys, for the delay. I actually thought it was like April 13th, so.
Avoid Friday nights.
Yeah, so.
Okay, now that you're here, I'm gonna open the hearing for 272 West Street, a variance from a side lot requirement. And I know that you're, you know, kind of caught on the spot there, but if you would please explain to us what has transpired since the last hearing.
Okay, so on the last hearing, I was requested to provide like an update map that I actually sent today to the ZBA, because I was thinking the meeting was like on the 13th. And I apologize for that, but I sent it over to Leanne today, an update map that shows where the well is, and also shows where the underground sewage line is. Also, I went to the meeting with the, with the.
Conservation Commission.
Conservation Commission, and she did like mark a line with her initials on my plans. Uh, and we cannot move the, the place because then we're gonna be very close to, to the buffer zone. So, and she did, did like, you know, cross a line on the plan, so put her initials there. Also, I sent to the ZBA zoning email today. Uh, this map, they show like, you know, roughly the delineation of the, you know, the wetlands, so you guys can look at it. And basically, I guess I got like all the informations that you guys request last meeting.
And Conservation sent a letter on your behalf also.
Yeah, yeah, so she did.
Which is the most important piece of that.
Mm-hmm.
And Leanne, if I could, um, does the letter basically say that they think that that's the only spot that he could put the garage?
Um, you want to read the whole thing or just sum it up? Um, yeah, the last line, "The Conservation Commission approves of the current addition proposal and believes this is a good option based on the configuration of property and its proximity to the wetlands. Uh, moving the location of the proposed addition may cause the project to be within the buffer zone of the nearby wetlands and would require additional permitting."
Okay, um, what, do you have an acre and a half there or something?
1.3 acres.
1.3 acres, okay. Does, does anyone have any questions or comments or?
I'm, I'm looking at the plan that you're showing the proposed leaching field area. And I assume the, you're saying the well is in between the two houses?
Yes, you're gonna see over there, I put like a little mark, a round mark, you know, with like an arrow and a line showing where the, the well is. So it's more than 100 something feet, I guess, like, you know, that's what the engineer says.
Uh, you'll understand that if the board is inclined to approve your request, that it would be subject to the Board of Health approval.
Yes, I understand that. So the, the engineer will work as, that will be like on his part of, of the project to work with the Board of Health to act, getting permits and everything, so this is just like an idea of the proposed leaching field area, just so you guys have an idea. Also, on the map, I did write it right on the bottom, uh, you're gonna see on the map by this tree, uh, a little bit of land topography, so you guys can understand how the topography of my land goes. So if you're facing the paper like this, you're gonna see like where the, one side of my property is like no level with the street, and the other side, I got like 6.5 feet higher. So just so you guys have an idea a little bit of the land layout.
Thank you. Um, the reason I mentioned the fact that we would make it subject to, you did get a letter from Conservation, and they seem to approve of the location. And they, I even spoke with one of the folks, and they said even turning that garage would be an issue. But if something happens and the Board of Health wants to move some stuff, and you have to slightly change the location of the building, you do understand that not getting the Board of Health first and then coming to us could cause you to have to come back to us.
Lynn, can you expound on why that they said that even turning the proposed building would be a problem?
Um, I don't know. Is anybody from Conservation on with us?
Louise Gianda is.
Okay, maybe she could better explain it.
Would you like me to?
Would you promote her, please, if she, unless she?
Oh, and Carolyn McDonald is also, and she put her hand up. Would you like me to promote Carolyn?
Yeah, Carolyn first, if she had her hand up.
Okay.
First of all, Carolyn, thank you for coming to our meeting.
You're very welcome. You, you've spent more time at other meetings. The least I could do is return the favor.
Okay, which, can you address the question about turning the garage, why it might be an issue?
Um, so, I have to say, kinda. I'm not, Leanne, does it say that in the letter?
Um, no, the letter just says, um, that "The current proposed location of the addition is outside of the buffer zone for the nearby wetlands and would not require Wetland Protection Act permitting. Moving the location of the proposed addition may cause the project to be within the buffer zone of the nearby wetlands and would require additional permitting."
Right, okay, good, because I didn't really remember anything about turning the building.
Okay, it may be, it may be my mistake, because I know there was a question about turning the garage. Um, Jim, maybe you could.
Right, to face a different direction?
Well, the, according to this drawing that you initialled off on there, Carolyn, there's roughly a 15 or 20-foot gap between the proposed building location and the wetlands buffer line. So I had asked at the previous meeting if there wasn't a reason that they couldn't just slide this building back 10 or 15 feet and then bring that other corner within the zoning requirement, they still wouldn't be in the buffer. Looking at this drawing, uh, somebody else had mentioned this current house and the proposal are kind of cocked at a, like a 10-degree angle from the street. So somebody had asked if they could do the addition where the addition would be perpendicular, directly perpendicular to the street. So it would be turned, and that would bring that bottom corner into, within the, the current zoning requirements. Um, so it'd just be a matter of taking the building, instead of being at a 10-degree angle, it would be straight 90s from the street. And I don't see why that would go into the buffer zone either. It would still be 15 or 20 feet from the buffer zone. So, um, that's, that's my question is, I mean, it, I can understand not wanting to move it back 40 feet, because obviously that would go into the buffer zone. But why can't this be moved five or 10 feet, as long as it doesn't cross that buffer zone?
As far as Conservation goes, there's no reason.
I asked the petitioner, uh, did you mention something about the pool in the rear or something about what's back there already?
Move, uh, the, the question Jim had like last time was like, why not move it back? Uh, I guess in the last meeting, I did mention that we cannot move to the sides into the existing house because of the sewage line and the well that we have over there, and how the house was built. So, uh, basically, like, if I move the garage a little bit to the back, over to the side corner, the, the last corner in the back, you will be, I'll be probably like digging a area on the buffer zone to do the foundation.
Does that answer your question, Jim, or?
Well, I'm not convinced that it's, that, I, I don't have the ability to do the math off of this drawing to figure out whether that's true or not. Uh, it seems to me that the building could be pushed back to just shy of the buffer zone, the buffer marking at 100 feet, and it would probably fall within the requirements for the zoning setback. And he doesn't want to do that, but from what I can see, it looks like it would work.
All right, so, uh, it's not, it's not the fact that I don't wanna do it, and, um, it's kinda like hard also to get all the numbers in paper for you guys, but, um, I literally, I don't know if Leanne has the ability to, to show you guys, one of the papers that I did send over today by email, this paper over here.
Yeah, I, I'm on an iPad, so I don't have the ability to share.
Yeah, um, so this paper, basically like.
Can he share, Leanne? Leanne, could he share his screen?
He can share his screen, or another board member could share their screen. I don't have that ability.
How do I can share my screen with you guys?
We'll have to ask one of the more technically savvy folks.
Got me.
Yeah, no, I mean to, so, but they still like.
If I may, Leanne, Lynn, I can tell him.
Okay.
So, um, if you move your mouse, a bar shows up at the bottom. So first, the first question is, do you have that map open in another tab?
No, I do not, but I, I can have it right here.
Right, so open that in another tab.
Okay, hold on.
This is great instruction, Carolyn.
That's all the meanings.
Hey, now, I do have another tab.
Okay, so now go back to the Zoom screen.
Okay.
And if you move your mouse at the bottom in green, it says share screen.
Found it.
So click on that, and then it's gonna show all of the windows that you have open. Click on the one that shows the map.
I'm glad somebody knows how to do that.
Thank you, Carolyn.
You're very welcome. If it works.
I did it once, but I didn't know how to undo it, so that's why I didn't volunteer, because I've got it open on my screen.
Yep, well, there should be at the top of the screen, there should be a button that says stop sharing.
Well, if he doesn't.
Yes, I got a bigger problem here, because they're asking me to change on the, on the, uh, change on the.
Do you wanna give it a try, Susanna?
Yeah, let me.
Sure, I, yeah, I can do that. Um, I have two screens up, so hopefully this is gonna work. Um, let me make sure I have it up. It's the, the one showing the wetlands, and then there's a line on it, and then where does it say 100?
Yes, that one, can you, can you, yeah, if you can get that.
All right, here goes. Um, oh, hey, this is gonna work, okay.
There you go.
Can you see it?
Yeah, great, so, just so, uh, you guys can understand, I did go like the taper measure, and I did touch the water. Like, you know, by the point, I literally like put like the zero number, like where the water is, and there is 100 feet into where this line is, right? So if I shift, let's say that I move the, the foundation, I will be literally digging where the line is to place the foundation, so this line would be like the buffer zone. So, uh, that's, and I did mention that to Carolyn when I had the meeting with the, with the Wetland Commissions and everybody over there. So that's like basically the dimensions that I did. It's having my tape, like literally touching the water, but, uh, you can count another like 10 to 15 feet from the board of the pond, they still consider, considering, uh, to be wetlands. So that means I would be like, you know, another 15 feet from this big line towards the house. So that's basically like, uh, being honest with you guys, it's just, not just because, well, I don't wanna be that guy that say, well, I want my foundation here, that's where I want it, but I've just been honest with you guys. Uh, if you guys want me to hire an engineer or somebody that would just like delineate everything, I can try to spend a couple thousand dollars doing that, but I'm 100% sure that if I move the foundation to the side, or if I push back or anything like that, I will be having issues with the, I will be touching the, the buffer zone.
Jim, do you have anything else that?
I'm not sure why that would be true. Um, you can go back to the buffer zone. That's, that's the whole purpose of having that 100-foot line, so you can go back to that. Um,
That will, that will require me to get a special permit from the, from the.
No, 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 as long as you don't cross it, you don't have, need a permit.
But he would have to pay somebody to delineate it properly, because putting the tape in the edge of the water is not the edge of the wetlands.
Okay, well, I'm going by your, the drawing that you gave us, that you initialled off on, um, showing where that line is, and I'm, you know, going by that.
Do you want that on the screen?
If you can bring that up, yeah.
Hi.
If you have that ability.
There it is. Can you see it?
So there's a gap there between the proposed building and that line that you drew, that Carolyn drew. Um, and as long, it's, from what I can see, as long as you don't cross that line.
Yeah, you got about, like, you got about less than 10 feet from the proposed building to the line that Carolyn like drew on the paper. So, uh, if you calculate how much I need to move the building back, you know, so I can have the whole building inside of the, the, the setback, I'm gonna be touching the buffer zone. Because imagine like if I'm moving this corner over here, the corner that, that goes into the, into the setback. So to move those, I mean, to make, I, I have to move way more back, to be honest.
Is it possible that you don't need your building to be that wide? I know you have two garage doors and then a person door. Is it possible to eliminate the space that you have for walking and just have the two, two garages, which would make it narrower?
I mean, I can try to have the engineer like drawing again, you know? Uh, the reason he proposed this, it's because he basically, um, mentioned that he's calculated like, you know, you're comfortably like putting two cars into the garage and be able to open the doors and get it out of there. So I can try to find some other way to work with. But the reason I'm doing the appealing, it's because basically like my both neighbors, it's on, um, they both agree that they won't be disturbed, you know, with that. Also, I have the wetlands. And I, I just think it's a fair, fair cause, you know, to, to get approved by the, by the board, because just trying to do everything correct, you know, the only thing is like, also, I don't wanna be spending like, you know, crazy money, dig, drilling another well, moving the sewage line, you know? And basically what I'm trying to do is just expanding the house to be comfortable for my family, and I don't have. To be comfortable for my family and I don't have to move out of Berlin because I really enjoy living here, so. That's.
Well, I guess, I guess we're going back to their, one of the original comments that, um, that our Lynn Ryan, our chair made. When this hearing was open last month was, it, you know. Regardless of what the neighbors think or whatever, we have to, the state of Massachusetts. Only allows us to issue a variance if we find that no other, that there's some condition. Due to the topography or whatever of the land that prevents you from following the zoning ordinance. It's not that we want to give it to you or don't wanna give it to you, we're limited legally in what we can do.
But I understand that, a- and I mean, what I'm trying to show you guys like, because. For me, just because I'm the homeowner, so for me saying that maybe it's not gonna be like, you know, change anything, but, uh. I already did like all the search, research possible. I already took every possible dimensions and you know, and I already did all my homework on these. And the only way I found was that, so, and as I was mentioning last, last meeting, I would spend like seven thousand dollars. Just to get to the point where I am right now, plus I gotta get the engineer for the system and everything. So this to- total project is gonna cost me about like, you know, a hundred seventy-five K. And I'm trying to invest in the town as well, so I'm trying, I, I already check every, every. Single detail, you know what I mean, it's just basically like, that's the reason I got to get to the appealing because. Was like, if I was gonna change the plan or, or find, if the engineer was, there was this, there is a better plan here and, you know. I would just trust and do a better plan.
Let me just read the short section that we're talking about. And it basically says, um. A literal enforcement of the provisions of the ordinance or by law would involve substantial hardship. Financial or otherwise. To the petitioner or appellate, and that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of such ordinance or by law. So, if, you know, financial hardship is one of the. Um, possible considerations. Does anyone else have any comments on, on this particular, uh, point of view?
Yeah, I just, I'd like to see something more convincing that the. Garage cannot be angled to be, uh. Parallel with the street, the front of it, parallel with the street rather than at the angle it's at now. Which would reduce the amount of the infringement on the setback. That would be one, I would, and if the engineer or whoever did the plans for this, this addition. Could say why it can't be rotated to be. At the, an angle that works with the side yard setback. That would be something I would want to see because right now it's, it's not convincing and I think Jim feels the same way. That we're not totally convinced that the, there are alternate locations. Where this would work without being. Without imposing on the side yard setback, and I, I think I would like to see. Something from the designer or the engineer or whoever as to why. What we're asking for can't be done.
So, on this page over here that I sent it today, you're gonna be able to see why we cannot shift the project.
Is it this one?
Uh, I don't know if you can share with, you're gonna see like from the porch, there is a stairs as well. Getting out of the porch and under that stair and under that, there is like a sewage line, as I mentioned to you. And you request last meeting, I did line up with the sewage line is. So by shifting the building, uh, to facing the street, first of all, it's not gonna look symmetrical. Compared to the, to the existing house.
Yes, but, but symmetrical, symmetrical is not a hardship.
Yeah, so, second, will require me to remove the sewage line.
So can you get a, some sort of, uh, statement from your engineer that. Turning the foundation to be parallel with the street would require. Moving the sewer line.
The sewage line and probably required to do another well.
Yes, can you get a letter from him saying that?
I mean, I can get a letter, but, uh, it's, it shows clearly like the plans.
Yeah, um, okay, and can you also?
Basically like what I feel just that you don't trust in my word, I'm not trying to bypass you guys, I'm just trying to get it right. So, I, I'm, I'm, I'm hundred percent sure of what I'm saying, and I don't have, I have no reason to lie to you guys.
I, I don't think anybody's accusing you of.
No, no, I'm not saying accusing, I'm just saying that that makes me feel that my words just like not valuable.
I have a suggestion.
From where I came from, we just give it a word, so the word has value.
Yes.
So when you say something, it's because you already like hundred percent sure of what you're saying, and I'm not trying to bypass you guys. I'm not trying to do anything wrong, and clearly shows in the plan, uh, hold on a minute. Clearly it shows in the plan that my, my proposed plan, it's hundred percent fair. Last meeting, you guys request me to show in the plan where the well is, where the sewage line is, I did provide that to you guys. I did provide with the stair, the staircase is getting out of the porch. I did provide why we cannot move the building, I did went to the meeting with the, the wetland commission. I did everything you guys request me to do, so now, of course, I can get an engineer and get a letter. But I would just feel like very frustrated to come to my engineer and say, well, get me a letter because they're not trusting my word.
No, I think, I think you're kind of in a good position because it just so happens that we're also meeting tomorrow night. If you wanted to either have the engineer appear with you. Or if you wanted to get something, we, we're just looking for a document. And again, it's one thing for you to write us a note and say, you know, I can't do this. It's one thing for the engineer to do it, okay?
I get it.
Would you be inclined just to settle, um, fears, um, that folks have that we may be overstepping our bounds? Uh, of getting some kind of a note from your engineer saying that the, the, uh, building cannot be shifted. Um, because it would interfere with the sewer line. Is that an unreasonable thing?
For me, yes.
And just to go back on the, you know, giving your word, um, the history of. Applicants before us giving their word and staying with their word, if it's not in writing. There's nothing to go back on, so, not a matter of we don't trust you, but. It's been an issue in the past where we need to have things documented and in writing. So that if an issue comes up, we have something.
Alright, so I'll, I'll call my engineer, see if he's available tomorrow, which I don't know if, what time will be the meeting tomorrow?
Um, I think, well, we have two other hearings, I think we don't have the third one. So what is it, seven and what?
No, Lynn, I'm sorry, the first hearing doesn't start till seven thirty, so we could start the meeting at seven and, um, and. Continue this one at that time.
And then, uh.
With the petition, I like. And you could either, you know, if he's available, and again, it will be a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
So, it would be something that, you know, all you need is the length and, um. I think you could, you know, put this to bed one way or the other, if the folks have a, a chance to ask questions. Or, and you have something in writing that says, uh, til- tilting or turning. Um, the garage would. Not just aesthetically be unpleasing, but it would also interfere with the sewer line. Before we ask, uh, the petitioner to do that, does anybody have any other question about any other area? Is the basic question we have why the building, the garage cannot be tilted, is that it?
Or tilted or pushed back, one or the other.
Yeah, or both, you know, yeah.
The garage cannot be pushed back because of the wetlands, that one is clearly like. It's like just, unless if you guys want me to get a. Um, delineation process or something like that, but it can't be moved back, that's hundred percent sure.
Is anyone, um, unhappy with that answer?
Okay, I don't, I don't see any reason for it, but.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not convinced that is. Uh, I mean, if, if you were to say it was a financial hardship because of the changing grade. Or the foundation required, that would be more convincing than just saying you can't do it. Because we've just seen where the line is and the line is. Along the backside of that shed that's further back, which. I, I know things look closer together when you're standing on the site. But what I'm saying is what we see in plan. Makes us think that there is room to move it back, so.
What I'm saying is that can, cannot be moved back without requiring a special permit from wetlands. Because that will cause me to be digging where the buffer zone is, because when you're doing a foundation.
No, it is not her special permit, what she said was you would have to have the wetland edge flagged, that is not, that is different from a special permit.
Well, I thought like anytime you touch the buffer zone, you got, you need to get a special permit.
But you are not in the buffer zone yet.
Yeah, but I will be digging in the buffer zone if I move the building, that's.
Carolyn, do you, Carolyn, do you have any comment or does, um. Louise, I know she's here, any comment about how close the back of that. Uh, proposed garage is to the wetland and if moving it back would be injurious?
The only thing I can say is if he is, if the, any of the building is. Does end up being within the hundred foot buffer zone, he will have to file a notice of intent. Um, he will have to have the area delineated and it will require a permit from the conservation commission. If it's within the hundred foot buffer zone. And so, if, if he, if he's, if he's ten feet, one second, one sec. If he's ten feet away from the line we drew on this map now. You're getting close to needing to have it delineated.
So moving that garage back ten feet would trigger something.
Would trigger, and it is certainly an expense for him, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, folks.
Alright, so while I'm still sharing my screen, I can put up the letter for, to, um. The zoning board of appeals from Felipe Alves.
Yeah.
Would you like, do I need to read it into the meeting?
Sure, well, I mean, it's two or three sentences.
Yeah, so it says, to whom it may concern, I, Felipe Alves, currently residing at two seventy-six West Street. Berlin, Mass, oh one five oh three, have been informed of an addition to be built within our neighborhood. My family and I agree to the upcoming construction to occur at two seventy-two West Street, Berlin, Mass. Douglas Amorim has personally informed us about his construction plans and we do not foresee any negative implications. Sincerely, Felipe Arantes Alves, two seventy-six West Street, Berlin, Mass, oh one five oh three.
Is that the only correspondence we received, Leanne?
No, there was a second one too. Um, if it was a letter or by email.
It was emailed by Sarah Warren.
Yeah.
Alright, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen now.
Thank you.
Good job, Sue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for helping this screen.
And Carolyn, we learned a new skill, thank you.
See, it takes a village.
I think we all got dragged into this whole thing anyway.
Alright.
Or would never be sitting in these chairs.
Lynn, I can read the email from the other butter if you want, I have it on my screen.
Thank you, please go ahead.
Um, hi Douglas, it's fine with us, hopefully you'll have a little landscaping on our side. Um, good luck, we won't be attending the meeting, feel free to use this letter to note our agreement with your plans. Thank you for sending them along, best, Sarah Warren, owner of two sixty-eight West Street, Berlin.
You're a wise man to meet with your neighbors.
Wow, I lose a parentcy in America, so.
I'm gonna make a suggestion, we continue to tomorrow night, but I wanna make sure. That if we do, and if we have the petitioner coming back, that he knows exactly what we're asking of him. And what I'm getting is that we're asking for an engineer to, um. Explain or tell us why the, the proposed garage cannot be turned at a different angle. So that it does not infringe the what, four and a half feet into the required setback. Am I correct or is there something else we're asking of him?
Do you wanna push back?
Well, I think the, you know, if it can be turned, that's fine, um. I guess we get, if it's possible, we could discuss the, uh, what would be necessary to push it back, I don't. The problem is I don't have the ability to do the math off of these drawings to figure out how far it would actually have to be pushed back. You know, it might only be, well. I'm guessing it would be about ten to fifteen feet that it would need to go back, but I have no way of proving that.
Well, Carolyn has said that, um, ten feet is on the border, so ten to fifteen feet would push him into that area.
Well, I, I get that, but maybe it's only three feet for all I know, but, like I said, I'm guessing, I don't have the ability to do the math on it to, to know. How much actually would be required, and perhaps his engineer could tell us that, even if. We, you don't have to redo the drawing, if he could just do the math and tell us how far it would have to go back to get it in there. And as Carolyn has said, you know, if it goes back a couple of feet, then we, we have issues. I don't know how, you know, if it goes back five feet, is that an issue or is it, you know, does it have to go back ten feet before we run into issues? You know, obviously, at some point, we're gonna run into issues where he's gonna have to get a delineation. So, I don't wanna push that, I don't wanna go to that point where he has to spend money to get a delineation. But at the same time, if the amount that he needs to go back is trivial. You know, we could do that too.
Carolyn, that's a fairly expensive process, isn't it?
I, I think it's a, at least a thousand dollars for a full wetlands delineation. Um, I don't know that there's ever, you know, that there's a set fee, I think it depends on how much they need to delineate.
And that doesn't guarantee that it would be a positive or a negative outcome either, right?
Sure, uh, all it would do is give us a solid line that we all know where the line is.
As of today.
Uh, no, the, it, because it doesn't have to do with actually, that's why I was saying, by putting the tape up to the edge of the water. The way they do it is it's based on soil samples and soil that is, um, always wet. The organic matter doesn't decay the same way as it does when soil dries out, so they take a core sample. And they look at the color of the dirt. And they keep coming out and coming out and coming out until the color indicates that it's not considered wetlands anymore. So the edge of the, um, actual wetlands could be. Five feet from the edge of the water today, or it could be twenty feet from the edge of the water today. And there's no way.
Wouldn't be able to build this though.
In the, in that case, eh, he would already be in the buffer zone. You can build in the buffer zone, but it does require the filing of a notice of intent and like it kicks it up to that next level. So.
I just noticed, uh, Rich Hanks has his hand up.
Would you promote him, please, Leanne?
Yep. Susan already did.
No, I didn't do anything.
Oh, there he is, okay, right now.
I'm, I'm not a co-host, I'm just me.
No, I made you a co-host.
You did?
Yeah.
Privilege, thank you.
So you can assist.
Oh, God, I've got Mr. Richard Hanks.
Yes.
We can.
Good, so um obviously listen and so on the, on the uh. The wetland delineation, as Carolyn mentioned, it'd probably be about a thousand dollars for a wetland delineation, but then. His engineer would have to go back and survey that, pick up all those flags and add them to the plan. So that could be another fifteen hundred dollars all by itself, for his, for his engineer to go pick up the wetland flags. And put them on the plan and show where that would sit. So I just wanted to get that out there, that it's, it's not just a thousand dollars to delineate, it's also to have the engineer come back. And pick those points up and put it onto the plan.
Thank you, Reg.
You're welcome.
I just did some measuring quickly off of this drawing. Using your thirty foot sidelines. And I'm coming up with the back corner, it's like sixteen feet from the wetlands right now. And it appears that if he just went back. Maybe five feet and. Swung the backside towards uh. His neighbor, it would fit in there.
Okay, folks, I'm gonna go around and ask each of you. What we're looking for from the petitioner, so we can move forward. Um, Danny, what would you like to see?
I'd like to see about moving it back and rotating it. Just ever so slightly to get that front corner of the garage. Inside of the thirty foot mark.
Okay, uh, that's Jenny, um, let's see, Pat.
I. I always have a different opinion than everyone else. I don't see a problem at this point. It looks like a financial hardship.
Okay, Jenny.
Well, I. I agree with Denning that it appears. That it could be moved back and tilted toward the neighbors and. But I also understand that it would be a financial hardship. Well, not so much. I, I think I'm going to go with moving it back.
Move and rotate, um. Let's see, Jim, I think when we know where you are, but would you reiterate, please?
Uh, basically, it's the same thing, and I, you know, I, I'd like to hear. From the engineer whether it can be done. Whether it can be moved back and or twisted or turned. Um, I don't necessarily think that, that we would. I don't wanna require he do that if it's gonna be a major financial impact, but I'd like to know whether it can be done or not. I mean, if, if it, if it can be done and it's gonna cost him an extra fifty thousand dollars, then I don't wanna do it. But if it can be done, it's gonna cost him extra two hundred dollars. Yeah, okay, you know, it's a different story, so I, I don't wanna cost him a lot of money, but I just wanna know if it can be done.
Susanna.
I pretty much agree with what Jim said, knowing if it can be turned and pushed back. And how much extra that's gonna cost.
Okay, did I hit everybody but myself? Um, I tend to look at things, and again. Having to write the decision, I understand where you folks are coming from. But I think we're doing two things. Number one, we're opening Pandora's box, because when you start delineating. Wetlands, you never know where it's gonna end up. Um, and it could be a total hardship because he might not be able to build the garage at all. Um. I understand where you folks are coming from. Um, I think that if you folks would be willing to have him either get. Uh, some written comment or some um. Appearance by the engineer that um. Bolsters his position or bolsters the position of move and rotate. Is that where we're at?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay, do, do you know what we're saying here? You have yourself up as Douglas, so I'll just call you Douglas if you don't mind.
Yeah, it's okay, you can, you can call me Douglas, it's fine. So you can call me Doug too, so it's alright. Uh, so, alright, so I get it, and uh, what I will try to do. Uh, it's having my engineer, like, you know, uh, see if he's able to attend in the meeting tomorrow. Or if he's able to produce any type of paperwork that will uh answer those questions.
And you, you understand the kind of triggers that you're looking for. One is rotating it and moving it back.
Moving and moving back here like about five feet like Dennis said.
Right, and it, it, if you do that. I mean, we're talking about the sewer line and so forth, and I think that we need to. Either know economically why it would be very expensive for you to do that.
Well, then, that's like, probably like will cost me about like, you know, some money to redraw.
The, the engineer can probably give you some idea as to what it would cost you. So it, you know, we're looking for either an ass relatively stiff economic hardship. Or are we're looking for um, a wetlands preservation type thing where you don't wanna get it back too far. Okay, if that's the case, I will ask the petitioner if it would be his request that we um. Continue the hearing until seven o'clock tomorrow evening.
Okay.
Um, is, is that your desire? Okay, was someone here?
If I'm able to get the engineer paperwork, if, if, in case I'm, I'm not able to reach him tomorrow and get all the paperwork tomorrow. What would be another?
It wouldn't be until the second Wednesday in June.
June, okay.
And what you would do if for some reason you can't get him, you can't get what you. Um, think we need from you uh at that time, if you just appear and we would um. Take into consideration moving, you know, extending the hearing until the June date, if that's what you wanna do.
Okay, so that's what I wanna do. I'll try for tomorrow.
Now, you know, we know we have you sign an extension. I think for this one night, we don't need to have you sign an extension. But if you are gonna end up going into June, we will need another.
Better have a sign, cause you need a paperwork.
Okay, uh, would someone care to make the motion?
I'll move to, we continue this hearing till tomorrow night at seven P M.
At the request of the um.
At the request of the petitioner.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Okay, the time specific will be seven o'clock on the twelfth, is that correct?
Yes.
Now, we have to have a time certain. Okay. Uh, I'll take a roll call vote. Jenny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Suzanne?
Hi.
And I almost called on Carolyn, you know, so, and I'm an I. Okay, we'll see you tomorrow night at seven.
Bye tomorrow, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, best indoor sport. Okay, our.
You can, you can put me back in the audience if you want, but I am gonna hang around for the next one too.
Okay.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Yours, thank you.
Uh, you too, Rich.
Is our, yeah, well, we're hoping Richard won't go anywhere.
No, but I'm putting him.
Is our next petitioner available?
Um, yes, I see Jason's. In, in attending, would you like me to promote him?
Would you please? Is there any else, anyone else with him that he had liked to have promoted?
I don't know, there's a bunch of names, but I don't know if there are butters.
Yeah, we'll wait until, we'll wait.
Shelley, Shelley Clark is here, you want me to promote her?
Please.
Evening, everybody, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Alright, Lynn, um, I know Shelley, you wanted to promote Shelley Clark, who's with uh Solomon Pond Mall, there's a. Also a Paul McKinley, who's out there, is a, a third party independent L S P for the project.
I see, yeah, alright.
Third party, what?
Is a basically a third party environmental consultant.
Oh, okay. Okay, um, and again, if I may call you Jason, just because I'm not very good at pronouncing last names. Um, could you tell us one thing that had struck me this last month while I was mulling this over? Are you doing infrastructure work for other municipalities? Is that what you're doing?
No, we. Our client is a, it's a private client, um, we haven't, we're an electrical contractor installing an electrical duct bank, transmission duct bank. Uh, so our clients aren't, aren't with the municipalities, but we'll be doing work within Hudson, uh, Stowe and Sudbury. But uh, we've, we've had contact with the local um. The local municipalities prior.
So are you putting in under qua, under what, the underground electrical, is that what you're doing?
It's, it's an underground um electrical duct bank, correct.
Are you removing anything?
Uh, well, we're, we're moving the soils, been able to, for, to, to place the, to place the, uh, the product, yes.
But there's no existing conduit that you're gonna.
This is, this is a brand new line.
Okay, well, I just have something to discuss with you, and this is gonna be. A bit of a surprise to my colleagues too. In talking about the soil and, and, and uh with town council and who is um. Authority over the, you know, soil being stored and, and so forth. I spoke with town council and town council informs me that we are not the authority in this instance. That um, the special permit and um site plan that you have requested. Is outside of our authority, that the authority lies with the planning board.
Okay.
So, um, I don't know, eh, you know, I, I can't see that we should proceed with. These doings, okay? But um, I think the planning board, and I've been talking to some of those folks, would be most accommodating. And you would not need a special permit, council informs me, you would just need site plan. But because, because it is in the overlay district and it is part of the master plan. For that development. It all, anything, any changes, unless the use is totally abandoned, would go to the planning board. Um, she also, you know, mentioned the fact, and Shelley, you might wanna take note of this. That ea, anything in, that affects the number of parking spaces down there. Needs to be taken to the planning board for permission before you can do it. I E parking buses down there or, you know, subcontracting. So. My suggestion um would be. That you request us to withdraw your petition and site plan. And that you file immediately with the planning board, and I'm sure they'll be very helpful to you and will give you the first possible date. Because I've spoken with them.
Okay.
Um, and. Uh, it would only be site plan, and of course, we've kind of honed in on a, a good site plan. Um, or the, the components of it. So would that be your drawther? I mean, you're in jeopardy if we were to proceed. Um, on two grounds. Uh, the least of which is not that the city of Marlborough was not notified. So would that be your drawthers to withdraw the petition and bring it to the planning board?
Uh, I believe it will be, but just so I'm, just so I'm clear with it, Lynn, you'd be liking, you, we would be looking to. And present this to the town of Berlin's planning board.
Right.
Get approval from them first, would we have to then repetition with the Z B A?
No.
Okay.
They, they are the final word, okay? The overlay district and the plan that was developed for the overlay district. Um, is in the purvey of the planning board. And if you look at the bylaw, and I think Shelley, it might be well for you to take a look at the bylaw that governs. Um, this activity. There is a whole overlay district and there's all kinds of rules and regulations in there, and I think it would be well for you to take a look at it. Um, I don't think the fact that you have, you know, the buses there for, until August. Is gonna be, you know, an extreme problem, but I suggest that if you're gonna renew with those folks, that you also go to the planning board for that. So is it your request? Um, that we?
I'm sorry, Shelley, she's her hand up, if she has a question or if it's big.
I'm sorry, would you? Unmute, please. Shelley? We can't hear you. Can't hear you. Am I the only one that can't hear her? I mean, is it just age or?
Let me see if I can. Yeah, it's nothing on our end.
Okay. Shelley, maybe you could also call in, there's a couple of numbers there listed.
Oh, your mic not, your mic not, might not be on in your computer. I know you've unmuted yourself, but your mic, your phone might be off on your computer.
Can also um type her question or comment into the chat. Oh, we don't have chat on this.
That's right.
Yeah, no, yeah.
They took it away from us because of the open meeting law.
Yeah, I just said that, but I was on mute, so.
Yeah, Shelley, there are several phone numbers listed. Where you got the link to join us. If you wanna call one of those numbers so that you can speak to us. If you can't resolve the issue with your um internet equipment. In the meantime, I'll ask my colleagues how they feel about this outcome.
Uh, Tim Wheeler was in the audience, I don't think he's still there, though.
But Carol, Carolyn's also on the planning board, and I think she's still there.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've, we've got Carolyn. Chris's observation.
Right, but I, I, you know, in all fairness, I wouldn't. If the petitioner is willing to go to the planning board, I think he should deal with Ron and set up a date and stuff.
So, so Lynn, I had, just looking up the, the board members, there's a, uh, R. Thomas Sanford, the Tim Wheeler. Um, that you mentioned earlier, and then Carolyn McDonald, who you mentioned earlier.
And also J, J Teesh.
Okay. Okay, and I have an email address that's.
Carolyn, would you like to give him any guidance?
I have it, I have an email address, it's, yeah, planning. I have it, I have an email address, it's the PlanningBoard@TownOfBerlin.com.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep, um so Tom is the chair uh and J. Teach monitors the email, so I can definitely um give Jay a heads up and have him uh look out for your email and forward it on to uh Tom as soon as he gets it.
Okay, Carolyn, is there um, would you like me to resend the information that we provided to the Z B A or?
I think that would probably be helpful, yeah.
Yep.
And you're gonna have to file the paperwork for, you know, the planning board, too, so.
Is that um?
That would, that would come from them.
Yep, Carolyn, is that available online, or would that be, was that something we'd have to pick up at the, the town offices?
Hmm, that's a fair enough question. I'm not entirely sure, I haven't been on the planning board long enough to be able to answer that. But just ask the question in your email also, and Jay can definitely, um someone will let you know.
The town clerk's available tomorrow from about eleven to two, so if you need to pick up something from the town clerk, they are um available on those hours Tuesday and Thursday and Wednesday nights. So you'd be stuck until next Tuesday if you need to pick something up from the town clerk.
Eleven A M. to two P M. tomorrow is our only window this week, okay?
It's nine, seven, eight, eight, three, eight, two, nine, three, one is the town clerk's number.
Okay, I have heard, that's um, I do have her number.
Okay.
Last, not, just last question for me quickly, so Carol- Carolyn, do you, does the, uh, does the planning board meet uh by special appointment, or is it a, is it a?
It's, it's scheduled, um our next meeting is, I can tell you in one second, is the May twenty-fourth.
Okay.
But now fairness, Carolyn, I mean, he might want to come and see you folks at that time, but he couldn't have a hearing at that time, right?
I would imagine that's true.
Because of the two-week notice and so forth.
Right, right, yeah, because you would have to post it in the paper and, but it, it, you know, to start the process um informationally would probably be a good idea.
All right.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be a different, that'd be a separate, um, excuse me, that would be a separate email, um excuse me, newspaper posting, what we had posted from the, for the Z B A.
It would be a whole new ballgame. What I am going to ask the folks, um, my colleagues, I think we should at least, at the very least, return to you the money that you've expended on your permits with us, because of course it's, uh now that council tells us that we can't do this.
Okay.
You know, it's of no value to you.
Okay. Or if there's a way to, is it, is there a way to transfer it into, into town?
Well, I think she will refund it to you, and then you'll probably, it's different accounts perhaps, so you know.
Yeah, no problem.
That might be an issue for them. Okay, I would ask that one of my colleagues make a motion um at the request of the petitioner to withdraw his petition for site plan and special permit um based on a decision by our council that the authority lies with the planning board.
So move, also move, can we put in that same motion that he be refunded his fees due to the fact that it was incorrectly directed to begin with?
I will, I, I would suggest that, you know, that's.
We want to make it a separate motion?
I, I would appreciate that, Jim, if you don't mind.
All right, so we'll make the motion without the refund issue, and then we'll go from there.
Yeah, to have it withdrawn at the request of the petitioner. You will have to commit and, and sign a paper that you want it withdrawn, okay? Uh is there a second?
Full second.
Thank you, Susanna. Is there any further discussion? If not, I'll go around for a roll call. Denny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Um I see Shelley Clark has her hand up. Um before we make another motion, could is she on the phone or anything? Did we get a new phone?
I don't see anybody here.
Yeah, I can hear.
I was joining the panelists, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make it known that we are aware of the parking ratio, and because of the vacant Sears space and the former Linens and things space, that, that was all approved for not only a renewed.
By whom? It was approved by whom?
We don't need to go backwards for it, since we have been um approved for the parking ratio, it has nothing to do with anything going forward, because we're taking those spaces out because of Sears and Linens and things that was first approved. So it's a private property parking space, and as long as it's covered, then we're covered. We just went through this with um somebody else, but anyway, I just want you, you to know that we're aware that it's.
I strongly suggest two things. Number one, I suggest you attend the next planning board meeting and approach them with that um understanding. That is not what is written in our bylaw. There is a specific, multi-page bylaw. Um let me just, you want me to get you the?
No, we have it, because we're in the middle of a, a whole strategic redevelopment plan right now, so we've spoken to, my general manager and I have been on calls that nauseam, so I think, so I'll, we'll pull out all the info and, and find all those bylaws again.
Yeah, and there's one that specifically says any change in the number of parking spaces has to go to the planning board.
Yeah, but we're not changing spaces, we still have the same amount of parking spaces. It's not like we're putting a building in the middle of them.
Let me just suggest to you that you go, attend the same meeting that Jason's gonna go over. And ask, ask them, because um using a hundred parking spaces for a school bus storage is believed to be by our council, a um determination that needs to be made by the planning board as to whether or not it's significant and material. And any change in the number, regardless of what happens, in other words, there isn't, my understanding is there is no link between Sears and X number of parking spaces. There was an overlay district, there's a plan, there's a number of parking spaces. And um but again, this is the purvey of the planning board, and I think you would be well um now, now that you um are aware that it needs to go through the planning board to justify or, or resolve with them, they may tell you, no, you don't need to come to us to park school buses. But I have a strong feeling that will not be the case. Okay, it does that? Is that reasonable, Shelley, or? Okay, does anybody else have anything that they'd like to say?
I'd just like to make that second motion that we refund the application fees that were submitted for this.
But I just changed it to say that we suggest, I'm sure she will, but we suggest that the application fees be um returned or applied to any new permits, is that reasonable? Is there a second, please?
I will second.
Um all those in favor, I'll go around for a roll call, Denny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I, so that's unanimous vote. Um might I suggest that we close the hearing? Jim, you're good at making, you're good at making the motions. Um is there a second to close the hearing?
I'll second again.
Okay. And we'll go around, Jenny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
And I'm an I. Okay, is there any other business that we have before us this evening? I think we're all sat, aren't we, Leanne?
Um as far as I, I know, yeah.
Okay. Um.
I don't know if Denny has anything as clerk, or if there's anything else.
Yeah, I saw some papers in the Z B A box.
Yeah, it's all um uh reconciliations with the um accountant, and then end-of-year stuff that she's already is uh getting out the door.
Okay, is there anyone in the, in the audience that wants to speak to us?
There is a hand raised.
And who is that? Do you know, Susanna?
Karen, I believe that's in the butter for the mall.
Could you promote Karen?
Or, you're gonna do it, Leanne, or you want me to?
Yeah, I'm, well, I'm gonna allow her to speak.
Okay.
Is it already handed? Hi, everyone.
Hi, Karen.
How's everyone doing?
Good.
Good, uh there are a number of abutters on this evening, we didn't have the uh information that this was gonna move to the planning board. I don't know if Carolyn is still in the audience, but we would like to know how the abutters are now going to be communicated to. Um it's important for us so that we have a timeline, we don't understand if there's a new letter that would come out, or uh if there's a passing of baton that also means that you're gonna include the neighborhood.
Could Carolyn or Louise please explain the process? I'm assuming it's a hearing process and that they would have to send notices again to the abutters, is that correct?
That is correct. Yep, so there will be, there'll be a posting in the newspaper, just like before, and a letter to the abutters, just like before. Um so the abutter should be notified the exact same way they have been.
Okay, thank you for that.
Can I, can I just ask a question? Um Lynn, you raised the point of the school buses that are currently stored in the Solomon Pond uh car park. And that also for that activity, planning should have been sought from the planning board. Does that mean that the buses have been in breach all this time, and if they extend it, they have to uh take that to the planning board to get a consent?
I don't know if they've been in breach all of the time, I just know that in my discussions seeking information about who is in charge of the soil, council who was not able to be here this evening informed me um that um the section under the overlay, as long as that parking lot is in the overlay map, or um what do I want to call it? That it's covered by the planning board. And there, if you want to read this section, let me just get it, I don't know if anybody has it handy. But this in, you can look yourself at the um overlay districts. And this is the regional shopping center, overlay district. There's two of them, so you want to look at, I think, is it four twenty?
Yes.
I think it's four twenty. And. Yes, so if you, as it's online, you don't have to buy one, although you can for like forty bucks, I think. But I, in the um in our zoning bylaw, uh which in fact is online, you can take a look and read through there. Um just as a point of information, um some of the things that, you know, came up with the um town council was uh the regional shop is like, um I think four twenty-four dot one was one of the ones we were talking about. And that is land within the R C R S C O district, which is Regional Shopping Center, overlay district, may be used for a regional shopping center that is, A, in performance with the development plan approved by the town as the same may be modified by the planning board through the site plan approval process, and B, in compliance with the requirements of the section four twenty. So there's a couple of other sections, but that four twenty-four dot one is basically what council is saying that um it can be modified, but it can only be modified by the planning board. And again, that would be if it is not a major revision.
I understand, thank you for that, Lynn, we'll, we'll have a look.
Okay. It, I mean, it makes great reading, you know, if you're bored.
Sure, thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? Okay, if not, we, did we vote on, we drafted on the motion about the money back and about closing the hearing? So can we just give a motion to adjourn now?
Um Lynn, Karen has her hand up again.
Okay.
Service taking us out, I beg your pardon.
Okay, so. Okay, there's no, nothing else, Lynn.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adjourn, and we'll stop recording.
We'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll do a roll call. Uh Jenny?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Pat?
Hi.
Jenny?
Hi.
Susanna?
Hi.
Okay, it's a unanimous vote, and we're adjourned.